I'd like to welcome all of my colleagues this evening. Thank you for being here. I'd like to welcome all of you in the audience, particularly students of the Amherst Powell Regional High School who are here this evening to make a presentation. Look forward to that. And I would also like to thank those of you who are watching in our television audience out in the community. We have a number of important items to deal with this evening and we hope that you will find that the way we go about doing our business is appropriate. Before we start, I would like to just go over the agenda really quickly. There's a couple of adjustments. We are going to eliminate, as you move down to number five, the Fee Schedule Review will be postponed for this evening. And actually, I think that's about the only change that we're going to be making. But before we go any further with the regular agenda, I just want to personally thank members of this regional committee for their participation in the various subcommittees that have been meeting over the last several months, five, six months. It really is an honor to be, to share this, these tables with you, those of you who work so hard on the subcommittees. Your attendance has been really admirable and I, for one, as Chair of the Regional School Committee, am deeply appreciative of the extra work that you do above and beyond the two meetings that we have every month. Without your work on those subcommittees, these meetings would be much more difficult to move forward. So I want to just extend to you publicly my appreciation for your work, your attendance, and future work on those subcommittees. If you, as usual, I usually ask members of the subcommittee to take a look at the agenda, see the times allotted to each of the items, and ask if there is any request by any member of the committee to adjust the allotted time. Hearing none, then I'm going to move to the approval of minutes and I'm going to ask for approval by unanimous consent, the minutes from August 28th, 2012, September 11th, 2012, September 24th, 20, actually, we're gonna have to eliminate that because that's a joint one, correct? So we can't have, we can't read those minutes?
All three committees vote separately.
Okay, so we can, okay, and excuse me, and then October 9th, 2012, and October 23rd, 2012. Are there any requests for revisions to any of those minutes? Not hearing any, then by unanimous consent, all of those minutes are approved. Thank you very much. Going to move on to announcements, public comment. Anyone from the public wish to get up and share their thoughts with us this evening? No? Okay, then we can move right along. We're ahead of schedule here this evening. Going to ask Maria to introduce our very, very special guest this evening. I've been looking forward to this personally since I had the privilege of sharing an experience with a number of these youngsters and their teachers about two or three weeks ago at Michelle Alexander's presentation at Hampshire College. And so I'm very much interested in hearing your presentation about that and subsequent matters. So Maria?
Thank you. Yeah, it's great to have everyone here tonight and you're gonna do a great job talking with us and sharing what you brought back from the Minority Student Achievement Network, as well as your thoughts for the 2013 Student Conference that will all be hosted together. So I think it's probably helpful if, maybe if Marta Guevara wants to come up and do some more formal introduction, and we have Ms. Abbott here and Ms. Custard here who is supporting this amazing group of students.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It is my privilege to be here accompanied with eight of the 10 students who came with us to Phoenix, who once again, our high school stood out as stellar. Our kids, as we expected, they're just the scholars that we really think they are. And of course, a lot of the credit for this, aside from their parents and their teachers, are Ms. Custard and Ms. Abbott, who are really supporting them in different roles. So I just want you to know that you should be all very proud as to their performance and how fabulous it went and how great and how much they learned, which they will be sharing with you. And also, we're very excited about their input and about planning our 2013 conference. So we're very excited. And again, I can't thank enough Ms. Abbott and Ms. Custard for their support and their work with these fabulous young women and men. So who's coming up first?
Oh, come on up, Ms. Custard.
And do you know all of the committee members? Does everyone know everyone?
Hello.
Do you want, um, I can read the name tag. Just checking. We want this to be in a comfortable.
We don't have to go through the, yeah, we're good.
Excellent.
I don't, I don't have a lot to say. This is all about our students and how they represent us and how they work hard and challenge themselves as students of color, especially in a predominantly white institution that still has a ways to go but is working hard toward closing the achievement gap. And the work that they want to do to close that gap is what is gonna lead us, but we have work to do too, so.
Thank you.
I'll just say a quick hi. I'm Sherry Abbott. I'm a social studies teacher. I have the privilege of teaching the course. We're one of only two districts who has an MSAN course, The Sociology of Race and Racism. Five of these students are in the class and the others fully intend to take it next year. And it was a privilege and an honor. Thank you for letting me go with the students and work so closely with them. They've already worked, I'm sure, scores of hours, if not over 100, getting prepared for this, taking time out of their studies, putting additional time in to plan a conference that they believe is best. So I'm gonna introduce Melvin.
And I'll say, there's no pressure here at all that I was able to hear the young women speak at one of my meetings recently and none of the young men were there, so no pressure. No pressure here, but.
She means it, Melvin. There's no pressure. Relax. She means it. I'm talking about this.
You'll do a great job.
I'm Melvin Espinoza Rosa. I'm from Class of 2014. And so, since we are hosting the 2013 conference next year, the conference starts Wednesday evening and goes to Saturday. That's the MSAN Student Conference. We are planning on having an MSAN Week involving our community before that with workshops and an amazing speaker who we heard in Phoenix, Calvin Terrell. And I'm gonna bring up Lorenz to speak about the issues and the goal.
Thank you.
My name is Lorenz Harris. I'm in 10th grade. I'm from New York, Harlem, Manhattan. I'm in the ABC program here at Amherst. And basically, our issues are, we feel that we're not able to speak the truth about what students of color have gone through and what they are going through in, in communities where it is predominantly white. And our goal is to organize an MSAN Week with workshops and for our students, staff, and community and the participants of the 2013 MSAN Conference to challenge all of us to recognize our own prejudice and work on overcoming them with respect.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Hadrian Rodriguez. I'm a junior and I'm gonna talk about how we wanna make our program a lot stronger and make leaders to help everyone know that what's going on and how we can fix it. So we will be, wait, we will participate in ongoing conference planning and leadership development in preparation for being leaders and participants in the MSAN Week of 2013. So we wanna have a whole week, not only just for the MSAN, to let everyone get involved and let them know that we're trying to fix it and whoever can help is good.
Thank you.
There we go. Okay. So as it was mentioned before, how our goal is that we wanna be able to speak. Oh, I'm Tasia Clemmons. And I'm a junior. It was mentioned before how our goal is that we wanna be able to like speak about racism and that's one of the things that Calvin Terrell, that Melvin had mentioned before about. And he spoke about racism in a very explicit way and he didn't hold anything back. And that's exactly what we want for our MSAN Conference next year. That's why we want Calvin Terrell here for our conference, to play a really big role on our conference. And like, we want that because usually when racism is spoken about, it's usually like silenced and no one wants to like be a part of like talking about it or even like witnessing it or like noticing like what's actually happening. So having Calvin Terrell here who speaks about explicitly and speaks about prejudices and just like really, like it doesn't beat around the bush around it, that's what we want for our MSAN Conference next year.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric Gidden, a junior here. And one reason I think Calvin Terrell is such a perfect match is because of his ability to make people step outside their comfort zone. At the conference, he asked us as a whole to stand up if we had ever spread any mean rumors about somebody else. And for many of us, this was really hard, but the environment that he created felt really safe. So as more people stood up, it was easier for the rest of us to start standing up. I think a very real problem we have here at ARHS is that it's an unsafe environment for people of color to be themselves. So I think Calvin would be a great addition to have here.
Thank you very much.
Um, we can't all be tall, right? Um, my name, my name is Ramona East. I'm a junior here and I'm one of the unlucky five that is not taking the MSAN course. However, I do strongly believe that Calvin Terrell is an exceptional speaker and we need him here. We need him here in Amherst, in a predominantly white town where a lot of its citizens are undereducated about race and how students of colors feel in ARHS. So an amazing attribute of Calvin Terrell is that he has the amazing ability to reach out to all types of audiences, colored students, colored adults, white teachers and white faculty. And he has the ability to bring them all together and talk about racism and get some solutions and resolutions out of them. So we need him here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Camila Carpio. I'm in 11th grade. And I'm just gonna wrap up, summarize what we've been talking about, about our support for Calvin Terrell. And one of the things that Calvin Terrell taught me was that, I think that as students of color going to this conference, we thought that we'd already known everything. We mean, we experienced a lot of racism and criticism towards us. And we thought that we'd gone there and we would already know everyone's story and know how to deal with it and resolutions. But I learned a lot from my own, about my own prejudgments, about my own stereotypes that I create about other people. And I learned, Calvin Terrell really made it acceptable to me, like, clear to me, like how that, like how you really need to like accept and admit to the stereotypes you create about other people because it's a natural human instinct to judge people. But that it's not about the judgments that we create because that many times is unconscious. It's about the way we act upon them. And I think that one of his mottos was be politically honest, not politically correct. And I think that in Amherst, a lot of times, we try to hide our, you know, the reality and our judgments with political honesty. And you know, if we're not gonna admit to what the problem is, then we aren't gonna be able to solve it. So one of the ways he taught us how to be aware of the judgments we make and how to be aware of the way that media and the communities around us have influenced us for so long is a technique called conditional programming. I encourage all of you guys to go to his website called Social Critic and he talks about the workshops he gives, that talk about how media has influenced us without us even knowing through commercials, through TV shows, songs, you know, anything. And how it's our job as individuals to defy it, so, yeah.
Thank you so much.
All right. Hi, I'm Anthony Cruz. I'm a junior. And I'm here to talk about our theme for the 2013 MSAN Conference that we will be holding in Amherst.
And this is the first time we will all hear this theme publicly.
All right. You guys ready?
Yes.
All right. So in honor of Robert Frost, the Amherst College alum, we decided to take one of his poems, "The Road Not Taken," and we decided that the theme should be "Take the Road Less Traveled: The Courage to Act."
Nice job.
And we just thought it'd be a good way since we're hosting it in Amherst and used a well-renowned poet.
That's beautiful. Excellent. Thank you so much. And I know you all, you all so struggled with what would be the theme and they did it. I was impressed. I actually got the sneak preview and nice job, everybody. Really wonderful. So let's give a hand.
And if, if I could, we're gonna, we will be having, is it around 250 students from across the country come and join what we all will plan together for next September? So, and you can clearly hear that the students had an amazing experience and have a speaker who they really found to be a powerful speaker who made some real connections. So I'm really looking forward to hearing more about your thoughts and the plans so that we can create a great opportunity for all of you, but also for the whole community, which I heard many of you say, you know, get to the real conversations, put aside a little bit of the political correctness, and get down to work. So I just wanna thank you. This is gonna be great. And I don't know if there are questions, if you want questions and answers or?
Yeah, I also wanna thank you so much for your presentation and I am really excited about the conference next year. And I read about your trip to Phoenix and so I went and checked out Calvin Terrell on, on YouTube. And I was also, I mean, he was really incredible. And so I guess my question is, is he, is he coming and do you need help from us in some way to facilitate his coming?
Yeah, let me just say that Maria and I have a conference call with him coming up because we clearly have heard, and I feel the same way, I went with them to the conference and I can attest also, aside from they're the number one source, but he was truly transformational for a lot of us. And we had, Ms. Custard and I had met him before because he worked with the Windsor Public Schools, another one of our MSAN colleagues, fellow districts. So, so Maria and I are having a conversation. Ms. Custard has had, we all talked to him there, but then there've been some side conversations, but, so we're, we'll have more information and we will need everybody's help, but yeah.
And there will be funding requirements, so I think that's, if I can just put it out there, part of it will be the cost to make sure that we bring him. And then of course, the support from the committee and the community to create opportunities for people to hear him, like staff, community members, students clearly. But we will also work with, you know, the, within the school committee and the budget process for next year. And then we also have community partners who are willing to step up and help us. So that's, I know, one way we can help.
Shabazz.
Thank you for your presentation. This past week, I was also at a conference, not in Phoenix, but in Hyannis, Massachusetts, of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. At that conference, we, the keynote speaker there was very interesting. I won't say necessarily as dynamic as you all have attested to for Calvin Terrell, but she is in the Harvard Graduate School of Education. Her name is Myra Levinson. She's written a book called No Citizen Left Behind. And she calls attention to something called a civic empowerment gap. And all throughout this conference, the four, three, four days that I was there, over and over again, the stress was on our need in our schools here in Massachusetts to lead the way in the country, to close the civic empowerment gap. I like to think that what I've heard here today, that you all are taking a step in that direction in your own education, but also perhaps even in leading the way for our high school to begin to do more serious work around closing the civic empowerment gap. And definitely thank you and look forward to your, to your efforts in the coming year.
Trevor.
Thank you very much. I enjoyed getting to see everybody's presentation. I'm Trevor Baptiste. I'm from Brooklyn, New York. And I used to be in high school. I'm very glad to hear about the, what you guys workshop will be centered around, which is taking the road less traveled. Because in my experience, and I learned this in high school, when you develop the intestinal fortitude, the ability to be who you are, despite if you're short or tall, despite what people think about you or your stereotypes, you get to put out your power and people will either move aside or try to stop you, but you're gonna be who you are no matter what. And it's this attribute that for people who are experiencing, people who are experiencing racism or prejudice, or for people who are experiencing bullying, or for people who just need more self-confidence, this is the anecdote for all of this stuff. This is the thing that can, you know, heal this civic divide and heal, you know, just bad hurt feelings in Amherst that people don't wanna talk about. So I'm interested, very interested in hearing about the workshops that you guys can do with other of your peers to foster, how can I say, self-esteem, just the ability to, I'm gonna do it this way, whether everybody does it with me or nobody does it with me, because that's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna be short, even if everybody uses the microphone tall, I'm gonna pull it down because that's not how tall I am. And be all right with that. When you get me proud of who you are, racism stuff kinda rolls off your back. You can acknowledge it, you can see it's there, but it doesn't really cut you low ever because you know who you are. That, that requires a certain amount of fortitude, that if we, we would do well, or you guys can do well, if you spread that through all of your peers, everybody needs that. So I just wanna say I'm proud of you guys and you know, it makes me feel good about the future when we have juniors that think about such forward ideals as this. I'm proud of you.
Michael.
That's a hard act to follow.
They took some of my thunder.
I know. It's insane over here.
I just wanna, first, just thank you all. It was, it was really impressive to hear and thanks for putting in the effort and the thoughtfulness. I just wanna underline something that I heard, which is sort of a question maybe for you guys, maybe for us, but you know, we're the school committee and to have students say it's not safe is really deeply troubling. So I'd like to figure out, you know, in systems, there's a filtering where something happens and by the time it gets to another place, it sort of gets softened and clouded over. And I don't, you know, as one who goes to lots of subcommittee meetings, I don't necessarily go to all the meetings, so it might be discussed and I'm missing, but I think it would be appropriate because that seems like a really core, important thing, you know, for you guys, but I think for the system that we've gotta hear it articulated or have it brought forth, and I don't know if we have to have that discussion, but you know, one might say high school is high school and there's stuff that, you know, adults don't know about, but having it not be safe is not okay.
I agree. Anyone else in the committee? I'm sorry, please.
So we would like to invite you to the MSAN Week on, from September 23rd to 28th. I just wanted to, I just also wanted to talk about, just emphasize on behalf of our MSAN that, that, this is not a criticism, but that he has actually, that Calvin Terrell hasn't been booked yet. And we understand like that all the logistics and everything, you know, takes time. But we went to the conference and they've been to many of them, Ms. Abbott, Ms. Custard, and I know they've seen a lot of like, you know, unplanned, disorganized ones. And so we're just trying to make it a really good one because they're our first time. So if we could have, you know, if him booked as quickly as possible, that would support everything to get, you know, a quicker move from everything like little details of water bottles to the entire agenda. And I think that, yeah, if we book it, then we can have everyone have a good experience there.
There you go.
Ask him, shall I receive?
I just want, just one, one question. So is, is, I mean, I don't know how far you guys have gotten on the schedule, but it's your hope that he comes just for the first night or what do you?
We want him for the whole week, yeah.
The whole conference, before the conference comes. Okay, okay.
May I ask a question? Are you planning for him to run the workshops all during the week?
Uh, the majority of them.
He actually wants to work with our students to have them co-lead the workshops with him. So that's why he wants to come in early along with doing workshops with our community. He wants to work with our students in advance so that they can help lead workshops with him during the MSAN conference.
So this is just a question. You may or may not have talked with him about this. So is his plan to kinda get student leaders amongst our students to be able to infiltrate and, and, and train other students?
That's our model.
That's the plan?
Yes.
That sounds like it's my thing. I promised my son a $500 remote control car for Christmas.
Anyone else on the committee? Michael.
Just for clarity, since there, you were gonna say there was funding attached, do you need us to vote or support or anything at this point or is it premature?
I think it's as soon as I have the conversation with him and he tells me what the exact fee will be for him to come for a week and where, you know, is he gonna stay the whole week? Is he, you know?
Cool.
Yeah, and I think that it's probably not gonna be something that the school committee has to support all of it because we do have other people who are willing to fill out the checkbooks.
Cool.
So, yeah. And that conversation is in two weeks? Yeah.
Anyone else in the committee?
I just wanna make sure I know exactly how we're going forward. In two weeks' time, you will, you will know how much it's gonna cost?
Yes.
Then you will come, you will, you will come to us at the next meeting for how much you did not get money for from anybody else for us to vote on?
Yes, but you won't be able to vote it because it, it's the next, you can tell me yes, I'm supportive of this because it'll be in the next fiscal year. So that's where we'll have, it's just the budgeting we have to do. That's something that I build into the budget for the portion, yes, that you'll be involved in over the next few months, but it'll come in front of the committee formally. Yeah.
Okay. I'm done. I wanna thank Ms. Custard, Ms. Abbott, Ms. Guevara, for their leadership in this endeavor. Truly admirable and I wanna thank you very, very much for, for taking on this, this task. I also want to echo Mr. DeCara's concern about any student, at any time, at any place, feeling unsafe is unacceptable, it's non-negotiable, it's not tolerable. And we must, as adults, take any and every steps that we can to make certain that each and every single one of you feel safe every single moment, not only that you're here in this building, but that you're in our community. And we, as a school committee, I believe, must take a leadership role in the community in making sure that adults go down that path. I also want to applaud your courage, your commitment, your articulateness, and your perseverance in entering what many people, I think, would consider to be a minefield of race relations in this country. This is not a subject that many adults can handle at all, let alone even poorly. And so for a group of young people to lead us as adults through that minefield is truly an extraordinary experience. I wanna wish you the very, very best of luck. I can't speak for the entire committee, but speaking for myself as Chair, if you do not come to us and look upon us as allies in this endeavor, to look upon us as providing help for you, and that's on you. So I have an expectation that you're gonna show up and ask for our help because we can be and should be your allies in this. And thank you very, very much for being here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to, and you certainly feel free to stay, by the way. See how a group of adults works. I'm gonna ask Maria and Rob to provide us with a first quarter update, please. But why don't we wait until the crowd clears away?
Say, Kim, we don't have to.
No, did I not say that? Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, that's okay.
Did everyone hear that, by the way? We're not going into executive session.
Yeah.
My mistake.
Did you have a public comment?
We did.
You already asked.
We already did, yes. So Rob is going to come up in the first quarter report. Sorry, Rob, it's not you that they're like all exiting, you know?
It's Rob's coming up. Let's go home.
We hang on your every word, Rob.
Especially the first quarter report. Do you all have a copy in front of you?
Yes.
Anybody here? Great. So, first quarter report's going to be extremely boring because not much has happened yet. So, just to like kind of catch up with the general drift of things on the first quarter. And things are going fine, and things will go fine. Always there's changes, there's swings, and we have a couple staffing swings that are made up in other areas. So, salaries currently projected to finish slightly under budget. Some of the staffing has shifted to meet the needs of students. So, in response to new teacher evaluation system, the district has hired a director of evaluation and assessment to oversee the transition process. The district also has hired a part-time principal to oversee Southeast Campus. And those positions are funded by savings in the existing budget due to transition, if you will. Now, we've had transfer budget support into salaries to support two other positions. One is a new special education developmental studies coordinator, which we transferred from control accounts, and a new speech and language pathologist position, which we transferred in from expenses in special ed. Okay, substitutes are on track, they'll probably finish on track, and contracted payroll will probably use up all of that as well. Okay, so special education is in this unenviable position of being swung to the unexpectedly expensive. So right now, they have $56,000 left in budget, but they've incurred $115,000 more in our district placement costs than were budgeted. And last year was the other direction, but hey. And they had to transfer $30,000 bucks up to salaries to cover the speech and language pathologist from a line that they would have used to hire one on a per diem basis. So they're running tight, but it'll be okay, we'll work it out, things will swing around. Speaking of swinging around, other programs, which is vocational charter choice, we know pretty much that vocational tuitions are $31,000 under budget because of enrollment changes. We won't know really what the choice in charter enrollment figures and associated costs are for this year until mid-December for one and late-December for the other. So those two also will swing, hopefully they'll swing in opposite directions or be pretty easy. But that's probably the last surprise we will look forward to in a month. Utilities, again, hard to tell. If it's a warm year like last year, we're in great shape, we'll have extra money. If it's the cold winter they're calling for, well, we'll probably use up our budget. The good piece of news is, we budgeted at a certain cost per gallon of oil, and then we go out and we buy 80% of our oil on the futures market, and that tanked last summer, so we bought our allotment then, it's gone back up now. But, so it'll help us in the long run, so even if we have a cold winter, we're still okay. The normal winter, we'll have a little extra left over, so we're good. Now, risk and benefits is an odd bodge of insurance and benefits and whatnot. So right now, we're looking to finish $181,000 under budget, subject to a couple possible swings. But right now, it's looking like $181,000. That's going to help special ed, those going to balance each other out, right? So health insurance is under budget by $60,000. This is for employees, of which 36 was paid by EdJobs grant funding, and $24,000 is due to lower than anticipated enrollment. Here's an interesting, kind of one of these things, you can't predict what's the secondary effects of other events. So President Obama's Affordable Care Act allows young adults to remain on their parents' health insurance plan until age 26. And we're noticing an interesting phenomena, that a lot of our younger new hires aren't taking our insurance, where they used to. What we suspect is they're staying on their family's plan, so that's helping the district. Retiree health insurance is right now looking to be about $31,000 under budget, in part due to bringing retirees back from GIC to our own plan, and in part due to the GIC chewing up with us for past overpayments that they have discovered, so they give us And the counter-retirement assessment, we spent $15,000 less than we had planned because they allowed us a $15,000 early incentive plan. Call us in July, say you pay us now, we'll knock off $15,000 bucks. We jumped on that one. Workers' comp and unemployment insurance is looking under budget, but that's one of those things that varies. If somebody gets hurt, that can go out the window. So, it's looking comfortable, and it's certainly going to be able to offset special ed right now, so we're looking good. From the control accounts, $73,000 transferred out, we've talked about that, to support the development studies coordinator position, and another $26,000 to use to purchase new student assessment software, this was part of our assessment program. And I had to note this, because for the first time ever, the school committee voted to use some of the $280,000 contingency fund from ENT that we place here each year, and as you recall, this year you voted to spend $20,000 of it to support the regionalization study by the Regionalization Study Board. And so we transferred $20,000 from that contingency line up into the school committee line, and had the school committee spend the $20,000 to help defray the cost of consultants. That's about all I can say. It's been, it's early in the year, things are on track, they're looking good, the usual swings are happening, and not a whole lot I can say about it. Take any questions?
Some way to, my ongoing interest in how legal is figuring in with some of these expenses, some way of disaggregating the special ed piece there? How much of it is legal?
How much of it is legal?
If it would be showing up there, I don't know.
It would be showing up, yeah, legal shows up in three different places, depending on what kind of legal. So, there's a piece of legal in special ed, there's a piece of legal in administration, the HR part. And there's another part that is school committee legal. I guess those two pieces, HR and school committee, would show up here under central administration. I don't have those broken out, there's not a whole lot of activity, it's unusual right now. If you'd like more detail, I can certainly provide it for you.
We can disaggregate that and provide it to the committee, so you can see what we're spending in terms of legal, you know, across three areas.
Popular question comes up all the time, so we have a historical chart where you just update and give it to you.
And we actually have some less, I'd say, less activity in that area, which is never a bad thing.
That's right.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, I'll try to be more exciting next time.
No, boring is good, we like boring, but thank you.
The next item is in, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know he was leaving the stage. I just wanted to thank you. I always find these so informative and so well-presented, so thank you for doing that. And you have like a zen quality.
You're welcome, but I don't sing.
But you dance, because you're going back and forth.
Thank you, Rob.
Enrollment update.
Okay, so, again, this is just an update that you are provided at this point in the year as one of the upcoming budget, you know, pieces of information people like to have in front of them when we start to look at budget and what we're basing our recommendations on. And again, you see a consistent trend around the reduction of our enrollment, our enrollment history has been consistently declining, you know, pretty consistently declining since 2003 to 2004. We also demonstrate for you where we're receiving our choice students from, so you're able to kind of take a look at our little less than 100 choice students and which communities they're choosing in from. At this point in the year, we look at, we start to look at enrollments as of October 1, and we start to do a level of analysis at all levels to see where there are some natural reductions to be, that may occur at budget time, as well as we start to look at the choice revenue that comes in, that we came in from last year, and to take a look at how much, or this year I should say, and how much we will be applying for FY14. So we'll start to use this information in budget preparation. And then you can see, and again, I'm not the best person to talk about the survival factor, which I know Kathy has spoken to the committee before about, and how she projects forward the enrollments of students from 2013, 14, up to 17, 18. So I think, you know, it's fairly straightforward, but it's one piece of information that we will start to put in front of the committee as we start to build the budget. And as Kathy mentioned last time, and I think Rob also referenced tonight, that we will have more information around students who are attending private schools, charter schools, all of that information starts to come in around, we start to gather around January, and by March, we tend to have firmer numbers, so we kind of have to go by some of the historical trends. So, again, our projection for this year was pretty much on target. We have three more students than we projected as of last October, so Kathy does a pretty great job actually of being able to predict what we'll be looking at in the following year.
Questions from the committee. Shabazz?
Yes, so one of the interesting presentations I heard at the conference was about how different schools work to, districts work to kind of stem those declining enrollment trends. Do we have things like open house nights and efforts to reach out in the way the private schools do to try to show, roll out what it is we offer in our middle school program and our high school program?
We do, but it's been more geared toward people choosing in versus students who have been or maybe within our community. One thing you will see when we put numbers in front of you, and I don't expect that to shift, we're not seeing an increasing number of students exiting, so our numbers of students who are attending charter schools and private schools are fairly consistent and have been for a number of years. But I think it does probably, you know, your point is well-taken, that are we going to try to put some information out there that might entice families to come back to the district? Again, it's a, there's so many reasons why people would choose another school setting, and it's not always just the traditional offerings, it's very unique to families, but I think that's a point well-taken.
Particularly when there are new things that may be going on, new developments, and particularly in the transitions, they were talking about how it's important to kind of keep that outreach effort in the same way that the competition does, so to speak. In that regard, the, do we do exit interviews for this 50 each year that seem to go out, leave us?
We do. We do exit surveys when families unenroll from the district, and we do gather that information, I think we presented it last year, I think, to the committee, and we tend to give some updates to see if we're seeing any trends, and it's primarily moving out of the district, and some people will give you reasons why, but it's families relocating. But it's also, I think, a pretty consistent pattern in Massachusetts of declining enrollment in most communities in Massachusetts. But again, I can ask that we bring in front of the committee some updated information from those surveys, if that would be helpful. And I do, you know, think that some level of, I hate to say marketing, but it kind of is marketing, probably would be worth looking at.
Michael?
Yeah, you know, I think Shabazz's idea, sort of especially in the middle high school, that makes a lot of sense. What I was just going to add in terms of the context is what you were saying, that across Western Mass, so it's not just this district, but every district in Western Mass has experienced declining enrollment. But the other thing, if you look at the top, it's just that, somewhere in last year I heard this, and this bears it out, is that we're declining relative to the recent past, but not necessarily, you know, if the early 90s, we're about in the same spot. So we sort of, we had a big peak.
Yes.
And so it's not just a precipitous drop.
And I would love to speak to Mike and Betsy more about this before I kind of speak for them, but I know that we did see some shift moving from 6th to 7th grade, the numbers of students who actually are coming back to our schools from private schools, children who may attend private in the elementary, have been re-entering our schools. So I can also gather for the committee some more updated information there, because I know we have, I'd say qualitatively, and I can get the quantitative information, seen an improvement in our ability to bring kids back to us at that transition point, which is very positive.
And looking at this, is, can you follow a class by going diagonally? So if you start at the 292, and then go back to 294, and then go back to 283 and 307, is that the right way to track a class?
It is. It's how we kind of looked at that, I think.
So if it is, it kind of jumps, well, I don't know if that's a lot, but like going from the 307 to the 283, and then 283 back up to 294, is that because of choice?
Well, some would be choice, but I also think you see some natural, we do have a population of families that turnover, and there's for a whole host of reasons, because of the, you know, we also have graduate students and families who come into our community for a period of time and then exit. And then we also have, you know, other reasons for flux of families. But I don't think that 280 to 290 is like a large flux when you're talking about the numbers of students in one grade at the secondary level, within a school, say at the elementary level in a grade, I would be concerned. But again, you know, I'd be happy to kind of take a look at, and it's not that difficult for us to really bring that information in front of the committee. In particular, I think at budget time, you know, within a month from now, when we start to bring more in front of you, and you'll be able to examine what we're making some of our decisions based on, related to student demographics and numbers of students.
I wasn't sure who put this together, and I heard you say that you don't want to speak for who wrote this survivability factor.
Yeah, it's Kathy Mazer, and it's a statistical, I'm not going to even speak to it. I mean, Kathy can do this well, but there is a factor for survival cohort, which sounds really extremely depressing, but it is. So they look at the current demographics and kids that you anticipate are currently as of October, and then there is a factor that is put into your equation that is pretty consistent with how school districts project, but she can speak to it and probably.
So I'm not sure if this fact is going to reflect the way I would interpret these numbers. First off, I want to, you know, reiterate what Michael said, the fact that this has been at 1,500 in the 90s, and now is at, you know, 1,555 now. I've heard other people talk about declining student enrollment as if the sky is falling, and that's not necessarily the case. So I want to reiterate that and point that out. And wanted to say, and I don't know if this is the survivability factor, but statistics can point out a bare minimum of the services we offer, what the maximum number of students we could take and offer those services, and what the minimum would be for it to be cost-effective. And it's easy to look at our demographics and other private schools, as well as the factor of turnover, and put that in a statistical model to say that it's not a problem unless it declines faster than this rate. In other words, you can tell there's X number of private schools with X number of capacity, so maybe five or 10 people a year might go there or flux back and forth, that that would never be anything to cry over or be concerned that that's a problem with the school. But I don't know who's putting these numbers together, but there's a way that you can statistically figure that out, too.
And when you also, if I can, when you also, when we bring the budget books in front of you, which has the comprehensive spending plan, you're going to see a lot of the demographics, and you're going to see historical trends. So you're going to see historical trends in students who choice out the numbers, you're going to see, and where they're choosing to, you'll see private schools, charter schools, so you'll get to see how much are we fluctuating over years. And right now, and I actually, I think I looked at some of that just a few, before I came, there's very little change. I came, there's very little change in, I think it's charter and private schools. We've seen a decline in vocational schools, which has saved us some revenue, quite honestly, from our projections, but we have not seen a dramatic shift at the secondary level. But absolutely, we can, I'm sure that we can do the statistical analysis.
Imagine there would have to be a limit to how many students can go to charter school in any one given year.
Absolutely.
One thing that might be really interesting to see is another column that's number of teachers, and maybe number of pairs, or something like that, just to see how they've gone.
And we do have, we have the historical trends of that information as well. And what is really difficult to kind of really show is the changing demographics and your changing of staffing that's required based on student population. So you may have, you know, 1,500 students, but based on the level of need of students, you staff very differently. So you see some of that, but if you had, you know, maybe some demographic information also over that time and the staffing, that would, I think, give a more, more full picture. I also want to check what year we actually started accepting choice, so it sees where it's factoring in these years, because there's one point when we start to accept choice, and then it would, you know, probably give us a clearer picture. But, you know, again, any of this information, as we start to go through the budget process, we'll bring it in front, so that it can answer questions for the committee.
Anyone else in the committee? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to Kieffs. Before I.
Oh, I think we needed to do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Is that okay?
Yes, it's fine. I skipped over that, my apologies.
No problem. Okay. So, could I, could I hand this one out first, keep the budget guidelines? Is that okay for this? It's going to be, people have already viewed this before. Yeah. So we just have a couple other budget type of topics that we have to cover. One is to really discuss a little bit about the school committee priorities for the budget process, and then we need to go into some discussion around the capital plan. So these two topics are not voted tonight, they'll be voted at our next meeting, but it is some discussion we need to have. So again, just for the committee, I think Amherst and Pelham have already gone through this process, so this is not new of what, really what you'll be seeing in front of you. Just to kind of give a little bit of the, the process, you know, we reviewed some data. Mike Morris came and helped us to take a look at some of our MCAS data, and we also review our internal data. And then we start to look at our district improvement plan, the school improvement plan, so we need to create the roadmap of how we're going to address where we currently are and where we want to go. And then the next step in this process is to consider what are the budget priorities that will drive the work, because we should be putting our funding behind what we believe to be the highest leverage goals or strategies that the system's putting in place. So what you'll see on this, this one sheet is really kind of articulating what Amherst and Pelham, it's not any large changes from, I think, some small tweaks between Amherst and Pelham, but it's consistent with what you viewed in the district improvement plan. So there's some areas that we, you know, internally consider to, you know, as priorities. So things like maintaining and creating a tiered instructional model, where we're aligning curriculum, we're putting in place interventions, we're differentiating within classrooms, we're exploring a greater use of assistive technology within the classrooms for all students. Again, to be able to have some embedded professional development for our staff around mentoring and induction and ongoing development and collaboration, to be able to really thoughtfully phase in the new educator evaluation model, which takes time and focused embedded professional development. It's not, it's not a quick plan to put in place, so it's over years. To explore and implement data systems, which we've talked a bit about, and you saw reflected in the budget update, that we're purchasing data systems to be able to help us use the information we have now more efficiently, and then also some professional development for all of us, and how to use that information to positively affect instruction. And then we have some other priorities around adding some consistent surveys for student input and for family input, and we really want to look at ways of reaching more families, so family engagement, and also looking at youth culture within our schools and school climates, PBIS, which we've talked a lot about. Those continue to be priorities. And then, of course, we are always looking at, when necessary, cost reductions around enrollments. We look at enrollments, we look at other places where we can adjust our service delivery models or programming to realize efficiencies. So we will continue to explore cost-saving measures, as always. But again, we have some really important work to do, and that's what's identified here. So what I, you know, what's helpful from the committee, just, and again, to comment tonight, if it's helpful, or people are able to, but then also to share before we get together next time, so people can email me if things are missing from this list that are considered to be, you know, major priorities for the school committee. Clearly, some of the other committees, they'd say, you know, they'd share with me and say, oh, this is really a high priority, you know, data systems, you know, circle that one, because it helps us when we get to the place of, if we have to do a slower phase in, or we need to be, if we have a gap, and we need to be making reductions, it helps us when we're looking as an administrative team of where we are applying, at times, the limited funds that we have. So I guess the question is priorities, anything missing? And again, most of you have had an opportunity to take a look at this, other than Leverny Chutesberry, really, but any feedback is really helpful, because we're getting started on our work.
I like it the way it is.
Anyone else? You want to go to capital planning before we continue this?
Michael looks perplexed, so I don't know.
We don't want Michael perplexed.
No.
I was, I was thinking, but that was a good catch. I like it, I like it a lot. It seems like this is more embracing adding stuff, and the last one sort of gets to the efficiencies, and so I recognize that I think we're getting into better years, as opposed to the last few years, where it was, we're getting, you know, there was less and less, and it was darker clouds. But it would be helpful, not in, maybe in this document, but as you work through it, if there's, you know, stuff that's, for lack of a better term, around the edges that needs to be looked at in terms of efficiencies, what the rationale or the thinking is. So if I look back a few years when we had to cut stuff, you know, there was lots of thought about, is it driven by enrollment numbers, or, because things have changed, you know, so it's like, where is it in relation to the core of this other stuff? And so just acknowledging that there might be stuff that's lost, and having a rationale about how that relates to this other stuff that we want to add would be helpful.
Absolutely. And we, you know, internally, we've gone to the place so far of, you know, taking a snapshot of October 1, and rolling over and projecting our demographics of who we'll be serving next year. And we've also taken our current budget and where we currently are, and rolled that over with the assumptions that we are aware of at this moment. So we have a very rough projection of what that gap could be. Over the next week, I'm going to be looking at some of the assumptions like health insurance costs, how much of choice we're going to be applying, to see how small I can make that number before, again, we don't have a lot of the revenue information until much later in the, in the budget season. But it's now when we start to do our internal work around what are some of the costs, and what are some of the things that we are shifting, because there's efficiencies with using maybe some different software, or I won't use this right, but, you know, things in the cloud, wherever the heck the cloud is. See how, am I making you proud, Jerry? Fumbling around with it. So there are, there are different things that we look at that may realize some efficiencies in our work, and may actually affect finances, or not, in one direction or another. So all of that starts to take a little bit more shape now, and within a month's time, we'll be bringing much more of that information in front of.
I guess this is a quick follow-up.
Yeah, please.
Partly what I'm thinking about is, it seems like you're turning in direction in terms of the educational approach, so you know, the data-driven stuff, and all the stuff we've been hearing for the last few months. And so as you do that, there's a reorientation of sort of stepping back and say, the stuff that always is in place, how does that relate? And that's, that's the alignment question, I guess.
And can I do one more? It's really interesting, too, because some of our internal work right now is to really look at our own internal strategic planning, and we've just kind of embarked on that conversation, where we're not talking about a large community strategic engagement process, but when we look at our current goals, and we look at our system, and we think about a multi-year plan over, say, five years, there are some items that really need to be solidified before you can actually take the next steps, and some of those programmatic decisions around, you know, how are we going to provide X services? There are some, there are some aspects that need to be in place before you can start to make those changes. And what I plan to do is, over the next, probably right before Thanksgiving, we'll have done a level of that, and I've planned to bring that to the three chairs, because I think it'll be helpful to see what we currently have in place, and that some things are shifting now, some things will be shifting in the future, but there are intermediate steps, and some of those are cost savings, some of those are cost-incurring, and they may not stay that way over time, but it's kind of multiple moving pieces, if that makes some sense. So we're, we're starting to do that work, really for the first time, that we're able to really have a clear enough picture of where we're going and where we currently are, and to think about what are the dominoes in place, and be really conscious of, we need to be able to take a breath and have staff, we've asked a lot of our staff to really make some changes, and they need to take a breath, and they need to go deep in their work right now, so that we have to be conscious of how much we ask people to change in what period of time. So for all of us, but, you know, for a system as a whole, if you do too much overloading, you compromise the system. So we're trying to be really cautious with that, and we've been a little fast and furious, so now we're trying to be a little bit more planful.
We noticed.
Yeah. We all felt an urgency, but now we're going to do a little bit more planning.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else in the committee?
Just very quickly, I just want to reiterate, I think, if no one else thinks it, I think that we want to emphasize and prioritize things that will increase efficiencies and things that can be multipurpose. So I think in Pelham, we discussed technologies that could be used across, you know, killing two birds with one stone, technologies that can help professional development, as well as help bring into the 21st century, as well as help provide data for measurement. I think that that would be close to a top priority, because you can spend that money for three different goals that we're on our district. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Before we go, Trevor, I'm sorry. Shabazz, did I see your hand? I'm sorry, go ahead.
So just, this is for fiscal, next fiscal year, right? And I'm just thinking of the MCN presentation, if we wanted to note that that's incorporated. Would that be under item four? Do we have that, a sense where that falls within our priorities?
It would be falling, and I would say in all of the priorities, because if we're talking about making a difference in school climate and, and students feeling connected to our school environment, it would be playing out in terms of the curricular work, it would be embedded professional development for staff. So I would see it in all areas, and where you would see that come in front of us is a specific add on the budget. When I come in front of you and say, I want to add, you know, the 7C survey from Ron Ferguson for K-12, and I want to add X cost for the MCN 2013 conference. So you'd see that as me coming forward with my specific requests.
I just want to say, this sounds great, and I just want to support that idea of going deeper into the great programs you've started, initiatives that you've taken, and to not try to overload things, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think everybody would say thank you. No, it's good.
Anyone else? Before, if I may, one comment. First of all, actually, two. I apologize for skipping over this, it's very important, and I shouldn't have done that. But having done that, it gave me pause to think about the relationship between the budget priorities and the enrollment projections. And I think, I don't have anything to add to the priorities whatsoever, including the way they're ranked. However, when I look at the budget projections, I mean, excuse me, the enrollment projections, we're going to have four less students projected next year than we had in 1990. My guess is that the profile for the youngsters that we're going to have in 2014, 13, 14, are vastly different from the profile of the youngsters that we had in 1990.
Absolutely.
And what I, what I would like to see, or hear, over the course of the next four months, till we wrap up the budget, is that the narrative of the budget discussion be wrapped in a discussion of that profile. Because there's been a lot of talk about, a great deal of talk, and there's going to continue to be a good deal of discussion and debate and what have you, about per pupil expenditures, which are obviously higher than they were in 1990. But I think it's the public's right to know, there are many reasons for that inclusion, and I think part of it has to do with that profile, the nature of the profile, the specifics of the profile of the youngsters that we're working with today. And I think the narrative, the budget narrative, needs to incorporate a discussion, an inclusion of those characteristics.
Absolutely.
And if we could find some way to compose that and integrate that, that would be helpful for the community at large, as well as for us.
We absolutely could. And, and it paints a very clear picture of the level of change that we're, you know, undertaking at all levels in the system, and that it really requires us to think about doing our work differently, which is a learning, you know, it's a demand on our adult learning, and it's a demand on resources. So it has both aspects of how do we help us all learn and grow to serve our kids, who are a different group of kids, wonderful kids, but, you know, we all come with our own support.
Just a teeny footnote to that, because, well, I think that's important. It seems like while the profile has changed, I think the other component of it is that our expectations have drastically shifted, which is sort of, it's in this, but it's not explicitly said.
Yeah, absolutely.
My experience in high school is not this experience in high school.
No, very different. Yeah, absolutely.
Lawrence?
And actually, 1993, you have Ed reform in Massachusetts, and that, you know, the 90s and early 21st, it's been a paradigm shift in many ways.
Yes, it has.
So.
Is that the segue to capital planning?
That would be great. That would be great. Capital planning. Okay. So, oh, and Rob left for capital planning. So who has the, was in the package or not in the package?
No.
Oh, then we're going to have to take it off tonight's agenda.
Take it off?
We're going to have to. I apologize, everyone.
That's okay.
Well, what I can say, how about if I say a little something? So I think we started a formal capital planning process two years ago, and we really formally adopted a capital plan last year.
Yeah.
So Rick, chime in, because you've been sitting in the budget subcommittee with me. So we've been thinking about, as a region, we have to put aside funds, in which we do have some funds, for things like, whether it's the window project at the middle school, or upgrading locker rooms, or, you know, anything to do with the physical plant, and there are certain things that fall within that, that kind of a category. And it's a multi-year plan that Rob and the budget subcommittee have put together. Again, this affects more than just our committee, because it is also assessment to the four towns who are involved in, in support our regional schools. So I think last year was the first vote, and we have, I think it's about five years at this point, and we had a brief meeting before the meeting tonight, where we looked at what was accomplished and will be accomplished this year, what needs to be really kind of pushed off, and there's a whole financial, how do you fund those, and I, bands and bonds, and how to support this essential work. We have had a preliminary conversation, which will come in front of the committee. Sorry that you were not able to see it tonight, but we can send out the document to you tomorrow, so that you can have time to review this document and ask questions before our next meeting, where we'll kind of get a little more in-depth into what are some of the capital needs for the middle school and the high school. Some are very educationally based, which is one of the conversations about upgrading the labs for the middle school. As Betsy exits, she goes, yea. Which is a substantial investment, but it's a critical investment for, you know, kind of bringing us up into where we need to be in terms of our, our science instruction. And then others are very, you know, how do we resurface the parking lot at the high school? So we'll bring that in front of you all, and then we'll be asking you to, to vote at some point, an updated capital plan. Is there anything I'm missing, Rick, with?
No.
Okay.
When you receive the capital plan information, I would encourage you to write down any and every question you may have because it's, it's, it's a clear document, but it's also a complicated document. And I'm sure it'll generate a lot of questions and thought on your part when you take a look at it. Not just for this coming year, but looking into the future, the next three or four years. Catherine?
Yeah, and I, just to add on to that, so the Budget Subcommittee is having a meeting next week. So if you can look at the documents and if you have questions, sort of immediate questions, it'd be helpful to, in our ongoing discussion, to have, to sort of know what your questions are in advance.
You can email either Rick, Catherine, or myself, as were the three members of the Subcommittee.
Could I?
Oh, and Shabazz is too. I'm sorry.
And Debbie Yules, will you remind me to send out the document tomorrow? The other thing I wanted to mention is just kind of a little background. So Pelham has its capital planning process that just started with the town of Pelham. Again, Amherst is the same thing, that there's a, a planning process that happens with the town of Amherst, which takes care of our school buildings. You know, Jerry has to put in his request for technology and Ron does for facilities upgrades at the town level that supports our elementary schools. But again, because the region is its own entity, we're responsible for that whole process. So just kind of a little context because those of you who are sitting in Pelham or in Amherst region is its kind of own.
District.
Yeah, like corporation, is what I like to say. But it's its own entity.
One of the, I don't know if it's a problem or not, but a lot of the items on, on the budget are based on Ron Bohanowitz's recommendations. And if you really want to know, like, why are we spending X dollars in this year, you've got to really hear from him. So, you know, we've heard it from him on the Budget Subcommittee and everything, but I don't know if that's, is that happening with the full committee or not?
It doesn't typically, what usually happens is the Budget Subcommittee goes through all of those, that level of detail with the staff and then they make a recommendation to approve it or not. However, if the committee looks at this document and says, "Oh, you know what, to get us all on the same page, it might be helpful to have Ron come to the meeting," we're happy to do that too. So, you know, if you take a look at it and you go, "Oh geez, more questions than not," we'll just, we'll be happy to have Ron come and speak to the group. It's really fine. And I know we, we, I didn't do my update, so before you go, I'm just going to hand you an update because I gave my time to the kids, which was much more important tonight.
No comments on it, you sure?
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I think it's fine.
Okay.
People can read that. Yeah, yes.
Anything else on capital planning? Okay, now we can move to gifts. And I will entertain the motion to accept the three gifts that are identified on the handout that you should have in your packet.
I make a motion that we accept a gift from an ARHS parent guardian organization for nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. I put them all in the same motion?
Yes, please.
Gift from Timothy Mitchell for five hundred dollars and a gift from Brian Ecclestone for one thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Totalling twenty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Seconded by Lawrence. Any discussion?
What's the nineteen thousand? That, that's a lot. I hadn't heard of that amount.
Yeah, I don't know where, do you know Debbie, offhand with PGO?
And Mark left.
I mean, it looks great, I just didn't know they had money.
You know, PGO makes a huge effort to raise money for clothes.
Oh, that could be. I'll find out the good news though in email.
Michael?
Do you know any background about the, the piano donation? I mean, I don't.
There's actually a letter.
No, I read, I did read that. Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't, I don't know Mr. Ecclestone, but it's.
Staff member.
He's a staff member, who does a lot of sound work for us, he's one of Jerry's staffs. Do you know any of the?
Mr. Ecclestone.
Brian giving him a thousand dollars?
Well, thank you to Mr.
He was very generous. Yeah, we appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? Before we vote, I'm going to ask for a hand vote. And the reason why I'm asking for a hand vote goes back to our last meeting. At our last meeting, we voted on the late start proposal. And in the confusion at the, at the end of that vote, I misread the vote much to my embarrassment and also needed to apologize to Shabazz, which I have done personally and I want to now do publicly for missing his vote. The paper reported it as seven-two and it was in fact six-three and I apologize to Shabazz for that, for that error. And I think the reason, as your chair, why the mistake was made is because I was hearing voices when I should have been reading hands. And so I'm going to ask for a hand vote from, from here on out to make sure that there is no future mistake. It just shouldn't happen. So all of those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Just carriage unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving to Subcommittee reports. Before Michael gives us a report on the Regional Planning Board, I just want to remind those of you on the, on the Policy Subcommittee meeting, we're meeting on Monday at five o'clock. And I was also wondering if I could request of Shabazz for our next meeting that perhaps provide a brief report on your attendance at the.
Sure.
Yeah.
School Committee Conference, that would be greatly appreciated.
That'd be great.
Michael?
So just in context, when the Regional School District Planning Board met last week, I think it was, there was discussion of the interface with the different stakeholders and clearly the Regional School Committee is a key one. So the idea was just to make this a regular kind of thing so that there was no surprises in the process as we go along. So maybe do this every month, but I had five things I quickly wanted to mention. We had our Town Official Forum on November third, which was well attended and several people from the committee were there, but the towns were represented. And I think it went very well. The idea basically was that as we do the engagement, there's sort of concentric circles of engagement. We really wanted to get the elected officials and appointed officials who are representing the towns knowledgeable and then proceed forward from there. So I think that went well and it was a good, that was our first foray and I think we learned in terms of going beyond the twelve committee members to the next group out. In terms of public forums, the schedule right now is that we're planning to have two different rounds. When we get findings from the consultants, the idea is to have an opportunity for the consultants actually to speak and report out to the community so that we're, as the board, we're not translating, but people are hearing it directly. And that would be in February. The board's intending to make its recommendation in March and then we would have public forums in April at the town level, each, so we'd have four, with the idea of being able to have engagement between the, the board members from the towns and the residents of the towns. So those concentric circles are starting, are in place and we're going to start planning for those, so more to come on that. We, Rob said that, you know, we spent the twenty thousand dollars to start the consultant process. We applied for a grant from DESE, which we should hear about in a few weeks. And then there's a second grant opportunity, which is from Administration and Finance. It's the Community Innovation Fund Grant. We applied last year. We weren't deemed ready to, Trevor's credit, one of the reasons was that we weren't aboard yet. We were four separate committees. Now we're aboard, we've done a lot of work, we've got things in place. It's due at the end of this month. And just briefly, the DESE funds certain stuff and it is the earlier timeframe. And the CIC grant funds different stuff later, which would be from April through May of 2014. So they fund implementation where DESE funds planning essentially. So, and we're asking each of the local school committees and each of the select boards from each of the towns. Amherst School Committee is the district that's applying on behalf of the four school districts. And that's those entities that have to sign on and then we're asking the towns through the select boards to sign on, which is different from last year. Last year, the towns applied. So more to come, but that should hopefully go in. In terms of consultants, the twenty thousand dollars that we contributed to the fund along with Pioneer Valley Planning and the Franklin County Council of Governments, the finance consultant and the education consultants are in place, that kind of confirmed last week with the finance one being finalized. So that's exciting. That really is new ground in the sense that we've never in all our previous years had experts who were doing this outside stuff. It was always on volunteers. So qualitative work, the, the quality of the work is going to be just greatly enhanced because they bring a boatload of expertise and that's exciting, it's getting underway. And then last but not least, this, you guys can jump in, but I think this is accurate. We started having conversations, what was calling core, core issue discussions. So one's about governance, one's about what would happen or what, how do you deal about the whole issue of closing schools, especially for the smaller towns where they're community-based. Then another one is around, there's four towns, but all four towns have to agree, so what happens if one or two towns don't agree? So those are sort of core things that we have to figure out before we get to the February forums and people ask those questions. And I think what we're clear about as a board is that we might not have the specific answers, but we need to know enough to understand the viability going forward. So is, do we have a viable solution or potential for solution around governance, for example? Or is there possible pathways to deal with the school closing issue? So we won't have the details to respond to, but we need to have enough information to be responsive. And the last subset about that with governance, which addresses us, without getting too much in the weeds, but our composition is determined by the regional agreement. And if we change in either scenario, it's something that we as a body are going to have to address. So for example, if we have a, if we create a K-six region, which means that we would dissolve our local districts, at least for Schutzbury and Leverett, we appoint from our local school committees someone to represent here, which is how me and Kip got here. But if we don't have a school committee, then that mechanism doesn't exist anymore. So it's something that we'll have to look at. And then with the K-12 option, one of the things would be that either we would create a new region or we'd sort of take the current regional agreement and as someone said earlier, cut and paste it. So we'd sort of cut out the, the contents of the current regional agreement, basically a, a mass amendment and then supplant it with new stuff. But that would mean that we would have to look at it. And the reason it's important here is that to make an amendment with the regional agreement, this body has to recommend it. So the towns don't say, "We want to recommend the regional agreement." The school committee, the Regional School Committee has to say, "We'd like to amend it, vote to do it." And then it goes to the towns for a vote and all four towns have to vote. So it's a little premature, but I wanted to make sure that it got mentioned so that if when we get there, it's, you know, everyone's sort of got, Rob, you've got questions on your brow there.
No, you didn't want to get in the weeds, so.
It's up to the chair.
Well, you know, my thought is, how would you amend a regional agreement to be K-12 when the regional agreement itself speaks to members of this body being put forward from local school committees?
Well, the regional agreement.
You'd have to change the description of this body even within the amendment.
Yes, yeah. But the regional agreement is among the four parties that are signatories to the towns. So the four towns, we would initiate saying, "We'd like to amend the regional agreement, this body." Then the towns would have to vote to change it. And you're exactly right, we would redefine, the body would redefine the grades in the district, the, the whole shebang. So it's either that or swapping it out.
Why would that be easier than starting fresh?
Well, I think the argument was it's two votes because if you, you could vote to amend, which is one vote, or you would basically have to vote to dissolve the seven-twelve region and then have a second vote to create a new K-12 region. So logistically, you know, it, it, it's a discussion we have to have, but it's worth noting the dynamics so everyone's on the same page.
And I also, just to add to that, one of the things I learned tonight in the Budget Subcommittee meeting is that if we amended the current regional agreement, it would also maintain our financial standing as opposed to being a whole new entity and would have to build up some history, financial track record. So, I mean, which could or could not be a significant piece if we had to go and bond something.
It's like another, another layer of complexity to an already extraordinarily complex.
Extraordinary.
Process.
The November third meeting was great, but, but it mostly talked about process, like what the process has been, what the process is going to be going forward. And I think really, it isn't going to get interesting until we start talking about the details. And it would be really great to me to have a four-town meeting or more than one in the future where it's kind of like the budget, where we float the budget and say, "What do you guys think of this?" We're floating ideas on regionalization, "What do you guys think of this?" Because the sooner you start talking about real details, like, the better because nobody's going to pay attention until that starts to happen.
You meant interesting, right?
Yeah, of course, interesting.
So I, I wanted to mention that, I guess, what we are going to do is when we have our two other four-town meetings this year, we will tack on a regionalization, you know, conversation or meeting to those. And, and I think it'll become interesting when the, the consultants start to report out because there are so many things that we can conceptualize, but we really can't even begin to consider how they might actualize until you have someone really doing the objective analysis. So we have all of our thoughts, and I think everyone does, around, "Ooh, this might be complex and this is an issue that I'm not sure about." But to really have the experts who have done this process before say, "There's, there are three different scenarios that we have to consider because of X, Y, Z," and put it in front of people, then the real conversation, I think, can happen. So it is just process at this point, I think, until that real info starts to come back. Not that it's not real info now, but. And I just wanted to, I mean, tell you what else is going on just a little bit in terms of, one of the things the Educational Subcommittee of the Board is doing at this point is meeting with different stakeholders in all the schools. So school councils, we've invited parents to come to that, we've invited PGO members to come to that. And one of the reasons we're doing it, we're not as, we're not presenting as much as we are collecting ideas and questions and comments from, from all of these people so that we can bring that to the consultants and add to our, and, and I've been really, it's been really interesting actually for me to be part of that, to hear what some of the questions are, stuff I, you know, the board hasn't even, and we've talked about it a lot and we haven't come up with these questions, so it's really, it's helpful.
I was just going to say, if you're going to add it on to the regular budget four-town meetings, I would radically shorten the budget part of that because usually that takes up the whole meeting and I can easily see regionalization discussion of details taking up more than the whole meetings.
Maybe a marathon day. Sorry, I won't do that.
So one thing that was concerning at the November third meeting for me was the, in respect to the moment in this process where the consultant reports have reported, the question was raised about a given town, if a given town's school committee wanted to opt out of the planning board at that point, if they thought, "Well, this is settled, we're, we're out." And I had a conversation afterwards and what I understand is that wouldn't stop the work of the planning board. Planning board's work would continue and would, you know, ultimately go on out to the towns and go out to everybody the same way as if those, whether those school committee, an individual school committee decided that they were out of the process at that point or whether they were still in is, in other words, it's not like, it's sort of like with the Constitution, the states, you know, one state might be, might decide, well, we're, we're not in support of something, but the process still goes on and goes out to the people. Is that pretty much along the lines of how people understand the life of this board?
I, I don't think so. So, and I would just differentiate for clarity's sake. There's two committees, so there's the Regional School District Planning Committee, which each town meeting voted. So looking at Schutzbury, for example, I'm the school committee representative of three people and then each one of those committees has to have one school committee person, so Catherine and Kip and Trevor represent those committees. And those are the committees that are able to vote to join a board and they're different from school committees. So my sense is that if a body pulled out of the board, it would be the Regional School District Planning Committee that pulls out. And if they did, if, if one of those committees pulled out, the board would be comprised differently. It would be a three-town board as opposed to a four-town board. A school committee doesn't really have the ability to pull out of anything because it's not technically part of the process. It's representing the educational interest of a town, but it's not part of this process. Is that clear?
So it wouldn't go out to, for example, the, the town where that would have pulled out of that, that committee?
Right, exactly.
The measure, whatever ballot measure, wouldn't still go out to that town?
Yeah, and so that's one of the contingents we just have to think about is like, oh. Yeah, so that's one of the contingents we just have to think about, is like, okay, we're doing all this work, and, you know, if someone had said, "Well, this is," I forget what, the, the non-starter or whatever, so if someone said, "We're not playing anymore," we haven't yet discussed what that means, because when we all put our hands in and we said, "We're four towns, we're all going to come up with four-town models," if someone pulls out prematurely, the four-town model sort of disappears, and then you say, "What do we do now?"
Exactly.
And it was voted by the town, like, it wasn't a school committee vote that, that made this happen, so the town has to, to vote to stop being part of it.
Where the committee representing the town, that, that three-person committee.
Trip, does he?
No, I was going to answer the question, but Michael did it, excellent job.
Anything else on the Regional Planning Board? Michael, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, guys.
Thank you for all of your hard work. Thank you.
There's a lot of us doing it.
Next item on the agenda is the calendar. As I look at my, I think it's now an outdated calendar.
Oh, I have a current one, too.
You have a current one, okay, let's, let's hear the current one, please.
So, I think the next meeting on November 27th would be a joint meeting, and we have the Affirmative Action Report, a professional development update. We have, in terms of budget, would be the capital plan discussion, and we probably have to put the vote off a little bit, because we haven't had the discussion yet, the, a fee schedule discussion, and the FY14 budget guidance vote, so you'd vote on what we talked about a little bit today. And then I have that you would also ask Shabazz to provide an update on MASC, right? And I think, did I miss anything else?
Say the CIC can't vote.
No, we don't, this body doesn't have to vote on it.
Nope, it's just.
But it's a joint meeting, so Amherst and Pelham will be voting.
Since it's a joint meeting, we will ask Amherst and Pelham to vote that, that night.
That'll be their first.
Which is still in timeline.
Yeah.
Yes, it is, but it's still in timeline. So the CIC vote.
CIC.
For Pelham and Amherst. And we'll have it ready to go the next day into the mail. Okay.
One, one question, the Policy Subcommittee meeting is, is meeting on, is taking place on Monday, it's also Thanksgiving next week, so I think all we will be in a position to do on the 27th.
Yep.
Is maybe give an update on what we've done, as opposed to present anything. The turnaround time just won't be quick enough.
Yeah.
But we can at least do that.
Okay.
And one other question on the budget guidance vote, I mean, going back to our earlier discussion, what would you recommend, suggest that members of the committee have do look at in preparation for that?
I think if just the document that I hand out, handed out tonight, if people are comfortable with that, I think that's the question, of these are the general priorities. There's going to be multiple conversations as we start to get closer, that will be some give and take, that'll be much more explicit than these guidelines. But if there's some large overarching priority that's missing, people should email that to me, or if there's a strong priority area, such as, you know, Trevor talked about, you know, the data work, you know, send that on to me. Otherwise, I would expect we should be in good shape, just to say, "Okay, sounds good."
Michael?
Just a quick point of clarification, with the Affirmative Action Report, is that mostly oriented towards staffing, or what does that include?
Staffing?
Okay.
Yeah, that is staffing. Yep, our hiring practices, where are we sitting with the demographics of our staff and such, and historical trends, and Kathy does, I think, a very, really excellent job at presenting that data.
Thank you.
It's a yearly event.
Okay.
Now.
Given the number of items, is that a 6:00 meeting?
I know that's hard for some people to do, though. Let's, let's see, because quite honestly, some of these items could be shorter. Let me kind of play it out a little bit, and then we can talk about it, but I'm, I think we might be fine to do a seven.
Anything else on the calendar? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move to adjourn.
A motion from Shabazz, a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. If you're unanimous, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, David.